We have a roll call?
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers. Alderman Eidman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderwoman Augerser.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. Move for our motion for approval to the agenda?
Approved.
Second.
Call of favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us down to personal appearance. Chip, Marzuko's here to tell us about the Down Syndrome with it.
Can I take my mask off? Can you hear me better or not?
I don't have a problem.
You don't have a problem?
Yeah.
Come on, pass that around. Appreciate it.
Okay. What I'm doing is I'm passing the route that's going to be affecting the city of St. Genevieve then. I want to thank you guys, ladies and gentlemen, for letting us come and touch base with you guys. The event this year is actually June 19th. The event's going to be very similar to all the events in the past years. We have been talking with Toby about making sure that we kind of stay off the pass that's needing to be stayed off if there's anything going on. And he was saying, I think St. Mary's Road is where there might be something going on that day. But what we're going to be doing is we changed it up a little bit because we used, last year, or the year before last, we sign in from like 9:30 till noon and we kind of kept them all together. And then they all left in one big herd, if you want to call them, you know. And this year, we're going to actually set it, they're going to come in at 9:30 and we're going to probably let them start leaving at 10:30-ish, something like that. And that's Leroy Willett. He's helping with the running of the event. So instead of all being at one time, they're going to gradually, you know, go out of the KC grounds. And if you look at the route there or the map that I got highlighted, it's going to actually go from the KC Hall up Market Street to Fourth Street, and then it's going to go out Fourth Street to Rosier Street, Rosier Street to M Road, then out M Road to Quarrytown Road. And if you want me to go through the whole route, I can. But then on the way back, it's only going to affect hitting the Marina Road and coming in and hit Main Street. And then we're going to, we thought about going up Gabori and staying away from in front of the historic homes down on Main Street then too. So we're going to, they're still going to be traveling a little bit throughout the city, you know, but city limits, but not anything drastic. And we were hoping that it's all right with you guys to do like we've done in the past and waive the sticker and permit for the city. We've got everybody on, the commissioner's okayed it already. We've got, it's actually going to go down towards Cas Casky Island. We've got Cas Casky on board to let us go down there. The Bell's actually going to be one of the stops. We got St. Mary's okayed it, and we're going to be going through different areas, the same areas, and stop at Bader's, and then kind of work our way back. All righty. And it's, they, we're going to have them all back and at the KC Hall by four o'clock. So the end, the event's going to go a little bit later than four. And I know we've got, let's see, the Jared Affet Committee okayed for us to have people down underneath the trestle camping again this year. And what they do is they actually rent the campsite out to the individual, and then they actually turn around and donate all the money back to the event. We do have some people for that. We've got some people that wants to stay at the Microtel and at the Bed and Breakfasts. So there might be unfortunately some transportation going from there around, you know, town to get back to their place of, you know, stay. And I know the parking, the last year, we had so many vehicles and stuff come in, we parked at Built Fest, we parked at the Old Missa Lane, and then we actually went up to the fairgrounds and parked at the fairgrounds. And we even had some people parking out at Eric Scott Leather's. So, you know, even when we come back, when I say that, you know, the event might be over at four, four, five, six, seven, you know, the auctions are going to be going on like six-ish. So there might be some things going from there to their vehicles, if that's all right. Any questions or?
No, I think everything, you know, we just, waiving the, that's no problem, I believe, with waiving the sticker. We don't need any of that. Just, we'll be on board with everybody else.
Did it work out all right with you last time, Eric?
It should be fine. The only complaint we've gotten is people with open containers while they're on the run.
Okay.
That wouldn't be allowed on the city limits. So if you could pass that along to them, it's part of their registration.
Sure.
It's on our sign up registration without them.
Okay. And again, we set it up so that every rider's going to have a device on it that shows they're part of the event, and we'll pass it on to Eric. So he knows that if, hey, there's somebody that doesn't have XYZ on their UTV, they can, they know that, hey, it's not part of our event. We do, we got waivers and stuff that they sign off because we don't want to have any troubles because we want to keep having this over and over and over again. And oddly enough, with, when we did the other direction, I don't think we found any trash. And that's when?
One cup.
One cup? And we, that's when we went north. Now, again, I'm hoping this doesn't happen, but if the good old Lord puts a flood down this way, our route might have to change. And if you, if we do know ahead of time, what I'll try to do as soon as we know, we'll let you guys know. And I'll keep in contact with Toby just so we can make sure that we're not crossing paths with anybody, you know, because we will be going most likely north again instead of south, if we do have to do something like that.
So Chip, you're also requesting that anybody who stays overnight, like camps, that they can use their UTV to get around town the weekend, for the whole weekend? Is that correct?
That'd be great.
It would be nice. I know with last year, or not last year, but the year before, we did have a lot of people that, oddly enough, the KCs, we ran out of KFC. I'm sorry, chicken. But then, so then what they did, they rode down and ate at the restaurants downtown. So yeah, if you don't mind, it would be ideal. It really would.
And is that the same weekend as French Festival?
That's actually the same weekend as the bike ride comes into town.
Oh, right, right. Okay. Thanks. I think as long as they're aware of what's going on around town and aware of how much, I mean, the biggest complaint I hear is noise, as long as they're aware of other things going on and cognizant of the noise. I mean, it's great that they go to local businesses while they're staying here.
Sure.
And if that's their primary mode of transportation, and they've already signed that waiver with you, I don't think that's unreasonable.
And if you need us, we can get your copies of the waivers. I think Leroy might have some of them with him if you want a copy of that.
Would the waiver cover the weekend or just one?
I guess we have to see.
I think the big thing that's going to help too is, I mean, two years ago, Andrew and I stood out in the street and gave high fives to everybody, and it took like hour and a half for people, I mean, just straight line of UTVs. And I know it won't be that bad this year just because we're going to let them go a lot earlier. You know, we're going to still let them go all the way up to noon for sign in, you know, because the route is about 50 miles. But if you don't, you know, dilly-dally around, you can definitely go down the route and back as we did it this past weekend. You want?
I got one.
I mean, I don't know, Pam, if you, if they needed it, we can have them make copies of this if you wanted to see it, and if you needed to tweak it. I mean, it's up to you guys.
Could you just email it?
Sure.
And we'll look at it.
Okay. Thank you. And if you see anything that stands out, definitely feel free to let us know and we can tweak it and make it a little bit better.
Do you want me to make a copy now so I can give you your copy back?
I got another one.
Okay.
All righty. Everybody in favor?
Yes.
Awesome.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you, guys. I appreciate it very much. Thanks for listening.
Jim, you're up.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm sorry for reporting in so late. I usually do this in February, but since last March, the company Sun and Products, which I worked for, split up the shop into three shifts, so we were all socially distanced. So this is the reason why I'm so late. I do, I don't have much to report, but I do want to report that the German band did do six Saturdays in St. Genevieve last summer. We did the Christmas parade, and we also gave out only three grants totaling of $4,000. When they requested a grant, we had one grant meeting last year, and we all, at that one grant meeting, we just decided that whenever I'd pick up the grants, we would just go ahead and give the organization what they requested. For A, the simple fact that the money was in the account, it wasn't being used. And two, with the pandemic, we know that the crowds weren't going to be as big and their income wasn't going to be as large. So we just went ahead and gave them what they were asking for. Our plan for this year, we are planning to play. I talked to the band director two weeks ago, and he sent out the emails, and he called me, or I called him, last Thursday, matter of fact. And he said he had sent out the emails, and he's already received some back already. So we are still planning to play. Now, the band board has not yet met. We plan on doing that in the next week or so. Things that I talked about last year this time about what we wanted to do with the money that we didn't use, we are still planning on doing that. We're still going to double the grant fund. We still want to replace the door in the storage room. And we still want to look at some new sound equipment, and we want to get our trailer painted. The trailer we had kicked, me and the vice president had kicked around, is maybe having it powder coated because that lasts a lot longer than regular automotive paint. So we're going to kick that around. We'd really rather have it done in town, excuse me, because that's where our tax money for the band comes from, is from the business and everybody in town. So we like to spend our money in St. Genevieve. So we're still kicking around the trailer. We haven't decided what we were going to do. We'll probably get a couple of bids and maybe get a powder coating bid and see what it actually costs to have that done. The only thing left on my list here is, and we are going to order some new shirts for the community band with, we haven't come up with a logo design yet, but we want to have something that represents the 75th anniversary. Any questions?
No questions. Jimmy, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Jennifer's here. Will you, we'll go ahead and move our COVID report up because you have to sit through all these other reports. Thanks for coming very much. Appreciate you coming tonight.
No problem. Our vaccination rate is 17.7, which is one of the highest in our state. So I think that's pretty awesome. I wish I could say we gave all the shots, but we didn't. Our county residents have to go other places. We don't get near the vaccine we would like. We have given just about 2,000 doses, but like I said, we give to St. Louis, St. Charles, anybody who lives in the state. About 3,200 of our residents have had their first dose. We were told we should get about 100 doses a week, so we're trying to plan how we're going to do that out of our basement. It's not time, worth our time to try to keep going to the community center, even though that works really well. So the hospital hasn't gotten any in the last two weeks. They're shifting all the vaccine to the bigger cities right now. So as soon as they get more, we'll do a big event like we have been. So what else can I tell you? Our numbers are way down. We only have three active cases, which is awesome. No flu cases, which is unheard of, but I think that's because nobody's traveling. Anything else? I mean, we're only getting Moderna. I haven't heard anything about the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine coming here. Last I heard on a state call, the big cities are trying to target the homeless with that because it'd be too hard to try to get them a second dose. But I mean, if they randomly send us some, we'll use it, but.
Even though our numbers are down, the health department's still encouraging mask wearing.
We are. Yes. I can't wait till the day when we say, yeah, no, with a remote.
Yeah.
Yep, we are.
Okay, thank you.
So you had said evidently there's a supply problem with the doses and stuff. So the people that got the first vaccine that are automatically scheduled for the second one, I mean, is that in jeopardy now?
Nope. We're told it will, it will come. So it has so far.
Good.
Yep.
But a resident, is there like, if, say a resident has, wants to go out, is there, where would they go to get information to go or just watch TV or?
To go where?
To go for a shot. Like I just saw where they're going to open some mass, mass vaccinations up in St. Louis where anybody can go. You know, I wouldn't got my shots in Cape.
Right.
But they're not doing anything in Cape, but they're randomly going around.
I think the state's trying to set up more guard events in the St. Louis area.
Yeah.
Those should be on the state website. I don't find that site all that user friendly.
Yeah.
But we're going to try to post events when we know that they're happening, but sometimes they just come up. Like if we get 100 doses, we're, that's not probably going to go public because we have a waiting list. So we just call those 100 and get them in through our basement and get them out. So that won't be publicized, you know, that won't be publicized. I know Perryville did one or two events, or they have one coming up or something, and I know the girls put that out on social media, but I don't know how other counties, if they're giving it to anybody who can get through, or if they're trying to just do their own county. We don't work that way. We'll give it to whoever.
Is our, I'm sorry, Ashley?
You mentioned the waitlist. Is camp residents in the community call the health department?
Yep, they can call them.
On that waitlist like now or for future?
Yep. If, as long as you're in the tier.
In the top tier or something.
Right. Yep. Yep. And I will, I will preface this. So they're opening the next tier Monday for the teachers, but we did do some, we did 100 school faculty yesterday and today. Used them kind of as guinea pigs, just to make sure, just to make sure our flow went good through the basement, you know, because we're so used to the community center and how great that works. We're like, woo, can we get 100 through our basement and keep everybody socially distanced and it flow nice? They were more than willing to, yeah, it went wonderful.
So is our, has, have the nursing homes, all the people in nursing homes, have they been vaccinated?
I believe so, unless they had the virus at the time.
Okay.
They may have been pushed off, but that had, they were vaccinated by their, their personal pharmacies.
Okay.
So I don't know a whole lot about that.
Yep. And is priority still given to the earlier phases if somebody from, that would have qualified under phase one or anything? Okay, just.
No, waiting list. But I will say this, if you don't answer your phone, we move on.
Uh huh.
So we can't leave messages and wait for somebody to call back an hour and a half later and try to save you a spot. You have to answer your phone. We're not going to take you off the waiting list if you don't answer your phone, but we're going to move on. I'm going to tell you, that waiting list is kind of a nightmare. Everything, nothing's worked so far. The, the link online didn't work. We had complaints from people who don't have the internet. Then we went to just phone calls. Then we had complaints because the phone's busy. So then we tried the waiting list, and I can't tell you how many hours it takes to fill 300 spots we had last week. We had to go through 600 names to fill 300 spots. That's a long time. Took three days. And our staff is small. So I don't know what the answer is for that. But I mean, the hospital helps too, don't get me wrong. But it was our 300 doses, so we felt like we should be the ones making the calls. But they did end up having to help us because we just couldn't get through it.
You have any other questions?
I think you're all doing a great job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The hospital too. We can't do it without them. So it's totally a group effort.
Thank you very much.
And I should say, and the police, and the ambulance, and the community center.
It'll probably get better.
And the volunteers. There are definitely volunteers. So yeah, we should have a big party when this is over.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, tonight's time for our city administrator's report.
Okay, I put an update at your seats. We, we had our conference day, item number three. We had our pre-bid conference with contractors. We had about 15 contractors and subcontractors show up, so a lot of interest in the police department remodel. So we're hoping to get some good bids next Thursday at four o'clock. Item four, the spending bill has passed the House. The county's looking at over $3 million in the new funding. The city is looking at, according to the National League of Cities, we could get about $813,000. Now, how that has to be or can be distributed, I don't know yet. There is no outline as to what's allowed and what's not allowed, so we'll wait and see what happens. But that will be coming our way at some point. And item five, we've really been just doing the crack ceiling on Progress Parkway. Have we got that completed?
Nope.
Nope? It's a long street with a lot of long longitudinal cracks, so we'll keep working on it, and then we'll get to other parts in the city. And that's my report. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I've got one more thing. I was asked to give out a medal for somebody that was in a run into Soto, I believe it was, and got a second place finish.
Really?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. She's going to open it?
Well, it's his.
I wish I pinned it on him. Wow.
I'm pretty sure there was only two of my age groups. I'm pretty certain of it.
Yeah.
But it's quite an honor.
Yeah.
To have completed it.
It'd take you all day to do it?
That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Takes us to our staff report. Toby, you're up first.
One of the things this week was the State Tourism Commission had a meeting where they kind of recapped some of their numbers and data from 2020. So I've included that as the fifth item down in the report. One of the most interesting things is they mentioned an occupancy loss on hotel, hotel rooms of 41.4% from the first week of March through the end of last year. So that shows statewide that there is a lot less hotel room occupancy. The back page of the report kind of shows our lodging tax data for the, well, several years. But for 2020 as a total, we were down 16.8% roughly. So down, not as bad as some of the, probably the larger cities in the state that probably saw a lot of hotel, open hotel rooms through the year last year. Our visitor volume obviously was down, as was the state's. I'm not sure exactly how they count their visitors, and we were closed the welcome center for two and a half months, so we went a decent stretch in there without having any visitors, visitor count at all. So obviously, we were down pretty significantly last year. The trend for the last couple of months has been above year to year from the previous year. So January, February this year, we've had more visitors than we had January, February last year, and kind of that trend holds true if you go back as far as November. So hopefully a sign of some progress for the year ahead, especially I think people are ready to travel and get out and do things. Some of the items that have taken place since I completed the report, the organizer for the Big Bam cycling event was in town today. He met with Steve Wilson for a little bit to just talk about a location for a shower trailer down by the Zürdefett Park area so that people who come in from the cycling event can take a shower after the run. They will get, there'll be some things down in that park area. I talked to Chip a little bit, we'll coordinate with him on the camping situation because the cycling event, they expect some RVs to come in in addition to people with tents. Could be up to 50, 60 campers out of the cyclists that come to town on Friday. And we also reviewed kind of a place for long-term parking because the cyclist could come in anytime in the weekend before, park their car for the week, take a shuttle down to Poplar Bluff, and then do the bike ride back up. So I think we've got a spot for locating those vehicles for the week. And we'll get with the property owner and talk with them about those arrangements. Also, we do have three kind of small tours set up for the week of April 12th to the 16th. So we're getting some small school groups that look like they'll be coming to town. It's kind of another indicator that maybe this year, we're going to see some things pick up. Happy has been working over the contract with Viking, so your next meeting, we should be good on having some of those contracts ready for agreements. Jimmy talked about the band grants, and they were very helpful for us last year with our Saturdays in St. Jen program. And I know they also gave a lot of money to the Ponopalooza organizers. And we're going to be looking to use the band grant system again this year for Big Bam for one, and then also, I know the French Festival is going to have a couple of musical acts for their June 12th event, and then we'll be getting ready for Saturdays in St. Jen again this summer. From talking with Chip, one of the things we're trying to coordinate is, I want him to be aware, last year, there was a Juneteenth ceremony that took place at the Amaro House. And so I want to make sure that the ATV ride would not end up conflicting with any kind of ceremony that took place down there. So that's part of the reason we were coordinating on the route for that event. And I think that's all I have. So are there any questions?
Toby, one of the downtown merchants have been meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
And is that just coordinating some of these sort of smaller?
Yes, they've been meeting on a monthly basis for the most part. They're currently coordinating the Shop Hop event that's going to be on March 27th. And each store will kind of have a promotion to make something available as a discount or some kind of promotion or prize for people who shop at the stores that day, which is also going to include some other events around town. There looks like there's going to be an Easter egg hunt coordinated between the Lions Club and Good News Community Church up at Permarquette Park. So there'll be some events in town that day, including the shopping event. But yeah, the merchants have been meeting, and it's kind of been under the umbrella with downtown loosely, downtown St. Genevieve, to coordinate events and activities.
Great. And there aren't a lot of empty storefronts these days.
There are not. Downtown is, and we've got a bakery coming in.
Yeah.
On Merchant Street there.
Great, thank you.
Toby, with the two events happening at the same time, I mean, with local law enforcement, with Eric, and then the county and stuff, I mean, are we going to have extra?
I think we're going to be good on, the cyclists are going to come into town on Friday. So in terms of coming, they're going to be coming from Farmington on two different routes, mostly coming in through the south part of town on a Friday, and they'll be coming in. He expects most of them to be here by 2:00 PM, but then they could trickle in anywhere from late morning into early evening. And now we're going to have some events downtown Friday in the evening. And I think from my standpoint, once I heard Chip had picked that date for his event, which also includes a recreational bike ride and UTVs and entertainment and food, I'm kind of steering people that they should stay for that event in addition to what we'll have going on Friday night. So I think ideally they complement each other in terms of having them back-to-back days and don't prove to be too taxing for our resources. But Eric might have a different thought on that.
Like most events, once they hit the city limits, they're going for extended amount of time, so we'll sack that for the, but we'll do our thing.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Toby. Chief David.
Good evening, everyone. I've got a copy of my report. A couple of biggest things that I bring to your attention is training. For the last few months, we've been doing a lot of online training, sending out videos and having guys review that to try to keep the distancing. Starting this month, we're going to go back to in-person trainings again, get the guys back out to the firehouse and get their hands on the tools and getting involved and stuff. I don't have it on here, but last weekend, we had a big extrication class we hosted for the University of Missouri. We had people from as far away as St. Louis City come in and attend the class. We had 24 students, and we did 16 hours of training over the weekend. We also have winter fire school. We usually send people to it. That also was virtual this year, but we were able to get several of our people to watch the videos and take some training that way, too. And the firehouse, I've been meeting recently with a local painter and paint supply company, and they've developed a really good spec as far as building preparation and everything else. I got a few things to fine tune on my part of it for the spec, but we should be ready to go out for bids within the next few weeks to get a price on what it would cost to paint the building. They are recommending some sand blasting that we hadn't really originally figured because there is some structural steel showing some rust. That'll have to be an additional bid, but I'm working on all that stuff to get that lined out so we can go out for bids. And we have the staffing report. I've got a few notes here. We do have one application that went through. We do have one application that went through the background check. And what we do after a background check is I turn to one of my junior officers and have them do like an interview with them, let them know what's expected of them from us, and ask what their expectations are for us, and go back and forth that way. And then that way, whenever they do sign the paperwork, they know what to expect from everybody and what we can expect from them. I have one that picked up an application, did not turn it in this Wednesday, but I anticipate that within the next week or so. He has a history of fire service in Mississippi. And we also had another one that moved to town recently with a local company that just moved in. He wants some time to settle, but he's interested in it. And I do have a seventeen-and-a-half-year-old high school student apparently that was interested in it. And when I sent her a reply back about you have to be eighteen, she said, "Well, I guess I'll see you in September." And rather than lose the interest, I invited her to come out to the firehouse and start sitting down on some of our trains and things like that to try to keep the interest going. So we're open to any kind of suggestions. And I know Gary fielded some questions for me last month, because I wasn't here. But there was some discussion about making a committee or whatever. If anybody's open to doing that, I'm more than open to sitting in on a committee and working on personnel. We've been doing some good, but I'm always looking for other options and other ways to do it, too, so. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Kenny, I had a call today and stuff, I had some before and stuff, and it's one of the things that's later on the agenda and stuff, is the new vehicle and stuff. And there was concern about whenever we retire the old vehicle and put it up for surplus, you know, that we're not getting fair market value. And I know this is not only your department, but any vehicles that the city owns and stuff, was what the call was about and stuff. But is there any way that we can, I guess for the taxpayers, maximize, you know, what we get out of these? I know I've seen some of the banks park the vehicles with a sign on what they are, you know, they're out for quite a while. You know, and then I guess they go up for bid, or there's a contact person. But is there any way that we can make sure we maximize, rather than just an ad in the paper or something to get? Because I know most of these fire trucks are low mileage, they're several years old, but they are low mileage and stuff, but.
The truck that we've got, that we're asking to replace is a 1995 Chevy pickup truck. And right now, the plan, to best my knowledge, is for it to be moved to the Public Works Department, so it gives them another utility vehicle. So the city will still maintain the vehicle, and it is low mileage. I think the last time I looked, it's only like eight thousand seven hundred miles on it. But everything, the truck that we're requesting, everything should slide out of the back of that one into this new one. And then we can leave the radio antenna, the mounting brackets, light warning, things like that on it for him. So all he has to do is change a couple of colors around the light bar, and he can put it right back in service. So it'll stay within the city.
Kenny?
Yes, sir.
It's been a while since we've talked about the knockstop program. Is there any businesses that you've been resistant with, or any that you feel should have it that don't yet, that we should probably send letters to and get them? I mean, you're up to thirty-five, which seems pretty good, but are there any that you would like to see that just haven't done yet?
Yeah, myself and David talk about this pretty regularly. The things that I would like to see would be things like our apartment complexes. We had a rash right after the cold spell, we had three different sprinkler systems that blew a line. And one of them was an apartment complex where we literally had to kick the door to get into the sprinkler system to shut the power of the water off, so it would reduce the damage to their building. You know, if we had those on the apartment complexes, it would make it a lot easier for us. And also, we have the benefit of somebody goes down on a medical call, they can call us, we can get in for the ambulance, too, so they don't have to break the door down.
So is there any, I mean, I know new places that come in that are required to have it, is that correct? Or change of use? Or change of use? On some of those larger complexes where it is an issue, can we do any kind of ordinance to require them to have it? Like in order to renew their business license or anything like that? To move the process along?
You're retroactivating it then. You're retroactivating it then in your ordinance. I'm not sure if you can do that.
I'd have to look into it. It's a pretty unique issue, kicking it off the cuff.
Well, I mean, it's kind of a safety issue, and I mean, I don't know.
Well, it's also providing access to somebody's real estate. You know, so it's a little bit more complex than just it's for safety. Because the alternative is, like we said, you can hit the door and get it removed. Yeah, there's, kind of arguing as a property, it would be, they don't want to just get keys out or have it even secure with the public entity. I don't have a definitive answer on whether or not we could make that retroactive. I can look into it.
How do we get that information out to existing properties about the knockstop program?
That would probably have to come through like the building department for building permits, or they have a, I'm sure, list of businesses in town, things like that. We don't keep individual records like that.
Can we make that suggestion before issuing, or not making a condition on your business license, but just let them know that we strongly recommend it when you do renew?
We can send out some material with the business license renewal.
Yeah, or you can do some kind of like promotional type flyer or something, maybe mail it to some businesses or doorknob or something.
We have in the past put it on our Facebook page, too. It didn't seem like it really drew that much attention to it.
What is the cost to a property, roughly?
I think with shipping right now, they're running about four hundred and sixty dollars. We had one local business, myself and David have been talking about, that's in a local strip mall. And we were suggesting that maybe the management company would be, benefit to them to have a box put in for the whole strip and put everything in that strip in that box, so we could access all the, the management company didn't apparently want to have part in that. And even the people renting the spaces next to them weren't interested in getting involved either.
We can certainly put something out on Facebook also, or existing businesses, because existing businesses, unless they just hear about it, they're not informed of it.
And that's kind of where I was coming from, is how do we let them know that this is a program that benefits them in the long run?
I can put that out there and then I'll tweet yourself.
Yeah.
And it'd be great to send something to that apartment complex and say, "If you had this, we wouldn't, you know, we would have had much easier access without doing any damage."
We actually, whenever we had those situations come about, I also talked to David, made him aware of it. So there was renovations and things like that, he gave us that angle, he used to.
Do business owners realize any kind of reduction in their insurance?
I would hesitate to say yes. I don't know that answer for sure. It would definitely benefit them, because if you kick in one commercial door, break the windows on a commercial door, that's a four hundred dollar, five hundred dollar door, so. The cost of the box anyhow.
Great.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. You can see my report there. Another Heritage Commission meeting coming up, March 15th. There'll be at least three on the agenda. Continue to get closer to finalizing our event with SHPO. On the building department, it was a little slower. I don't know if that materials cost is factoring into that. But things are picking up here this week, so you'll see some more on there in the coming month. Did want to say, Gene and I together worked on a significantly sized survey for the Building Community Effectiveness Grading Survey. I don't, I think I got that right. It factors into the ISO score for the city, and then that factors into insurance rates. So it was a lengthy, lengthy survey. So it is done and submitted, but I wanted to mention it. Rental Housing Advisory Commission, I just wanted to mention the report I gave last month on the low-income housing. Gina Bryant put that report together, so I don't want to take false credit for that. She does a great job out there at the St. Jen Housing Authority on Robinwood. Planning and zoning, tentatively will have a meeting, March 4th. Pardon me? There you go. April 1st, I believe.
I think it's the first, yeah.
There you go, thanks for that.
No problem. Joe?
April Fools. I purposely did that. And actually, I do have a variance request, but that won't be until April, so we may have a board of adjustments in April also. That, pretty much a summary of what I have there, unless anybody has questions.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Okay, great.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm glad Kenny was here tonight after all that, so. Well, you got my report. We are still repairing snow equipment as, on rainy days. We had two nights of days to stay in the shop and work. We haven't been out sealing cracks. Worked on some streetlights downtown, patched potholes, painting trash barrels still, putting flagpole back up at Main Street Park. Replaced exhaust on a dump truck, work on the lean tube behind the shop. Painted despair of fuel tanks on two trucks. They took a beating with salt. So we got them off and all cleaned up, and actually rubber coated them. Swept up sand, which we're still doing. Put up a sign on Progress Parkway, cut the ornamental grasses all over in the parks in downtown. Turned the bushes in the park and started sealing cracks on Progress Parkway.
I just have a quick question for you. I'm not sure if it's our responsibility or authority, or if it's the lime kiln with the train trestle, the graffiti. Are we able to paint that, or is that their responsibility?
I think it's our property.
It's their property?
Yep, it's their property.
So we would want to?
We have, in the past, when it was obscenity stuff, you know, put a coat on just so it wasn't quite as visible. But there, and the walking bridge down over the creek's got some graffiti, and that's Jirdefet's property.
So that graffiti from the weekend ago or something would be the lime kiln?
I think it's all in it. Yeah, we're loading rail, since they contract for them.
Can we contact them, let them know, to remind them that that would be nice if it was cleaned up? Thank you very much. And by the way, the lights, thank you so much. That was a monster. That was heck of a short. Thank you for taking care of us. I saw those pictures and I was like, yikes. Thank you, Gary. Thank you very much.
Yep, anything else? Thank you. Are there any committee reports?
Just a quick note for the Park Board. The Community Foundation, the Ozarks Fund has been officially established. So more information will come out after the March Park Board meeting. But if anybody wants that website, you can donate online or send in checks or whatever, but their website is cfozarks.org/SaintJenParks. But more information will come about on our social media later this month.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any public comments? All righty, takes us to our consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us to old business, second reading of Bill Number 4420, An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri Releasing Article 3 Safety Committee, Section 120.040 and Article 4 Information Systems Usage Policy, Section 120.050 of the Municipal Municipal Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Iguan?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Arberster?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number 4420 now becomes Ordinance 4331.
Thank you. Takes us to new business. First reading of Bill Number 4421, An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve Repealing and replacing certain sections of Chapter 340 Miscellaneous Driving Rules of the St. Genevieve Municipal Code of Ordinances. Section 340.240, Operation of Golf Carts Within the City, and Section 340.250, Operation of UTV Vehicle. Any discussion on that, or?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion for a second reading.
Second.
All in favor of a second reading?
Aye.
Second reading of Bill Number 4421, An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve Repealing and replacing certain sections of Chapter 340 Miscellaneous Driving Rules of the St. Genevieve Municipal Code of Ordinances. Section 340.240, Operation of Golf Carts Within the City, and Section 340.250, Operation of UTV Vehicle.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Arberster?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Iguan?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number 4421 now becomes Ordinance 4332.
Thank you. This is the Bill Number 4422, An ordinance approving a cooperative bid proposal from Sentinel Emergency Solutions Arnold, Missouri through NPP GLV for the purchase of four sets of turnout gear in an amount not to exceed nine thousand four hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading? Second, then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill Number 4420, The Second Reading, An ordinance approving a cooperative bid proposal from Sentinel Emergency Solutions Arnold, Missouri through NPP GLV for the purchase of four sets of turnout gear for an amount not to exceed nine thousand four hundred dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Iguan?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Arberster?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number 4422 now becomes Ordinance 4333.
Thank you. Bill Number 4423, An ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2022 Chevrolet Silverado 3500 HD 4x4 double cab for the Fire Department from Don Brown Chevrolet in an amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second, motion for a second reading?
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Second reading of Bill Number 4423, An ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2022 Chevrolet Silverado 3500 HD 4x4 double cab for the Fire Department from Don Brown Chevrolet in an amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Motion to approve, second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Arberster?
Yes.
Alderman Iguan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers? Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number 4423 now becomes Ordinance 4334.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 4224, An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a proposal for well cleaning treatment for two city-owned water wells in the amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand and nine hundred and ninety-four dollars with Flynn Drilling Company of Troy, Missouri.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion for? A second reading? I'll second that.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Second reading of Bill Number 4224, An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a proposal for well cleaning treatment for two city-owned water wells in an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars with Flynn Drilling Company.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderwoman Arberster?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Iguan?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number 4224, what was it? Forty-four? Forty-four twenty-four becomes Ordinance 4335.
Is there any other business? Anything else we need to talk about? Like a motion to go into closed session for, to talk about real estate?
Motion to go into closed session to discuss real estate. Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Iguan?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Arberster?
Yes.
Motion to carry it, says forty-nine.
We'll take a five-minute break and then we'll clear the gallery.